Board meeting tonight and let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the world with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody again for coming and we have quite a bit to get through tonight. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and just to let the other board know, we did have one revision, we added under consent items. It is, read it to you, it is Eastern Washington University College in the high school for 21, 22. And it's just our memorandum of understanding, we've already done this same thing for several other colleges. But so that's been added to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the agenda with the amendment.
Okay, I move to appropriate agenda with.
Your second, okay, so motion by Jeff, seconded by Jeannie, was there any questions on the agenda? There are none, we will, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's all yes, thank you. The next is communications, Mr. Ellis.
We have no communications at this time.
Okay. Uh, we are moving on to protocol for addressing the board. And as, as you know, this is, we try to set aside a few minutes at every meeting for the public to address the board where we are always willing and always want to hear your concerns or your ideas or just, you know, at what you guys are doing a great job. That, and that's what we're going to do at this time. You may present to the board during this time, we do limit it to two minutes per person that would like to speak. We do try to ask that you address or notify the superintendent or sign in when you get to a board meeting that you would like to address the board. It's a little hard with COVID, so the people in the audience, we're going to start with you. If you want to have something that you want to say, please state your first name and spell your last name so that we have it for our records. And we'll have, we'll have two minutes and Deanna, will you be the timekeeper, please? Okay, so she'll kind of do a wave actually when you're getting really close to wrap things up. So in the, in the audience, do we have anybody that would like to address the board? Okay, if, do we have anybody that is participating remotely? And if you do, Tammy, they will notify you to unblock them so that they can address more than you'll just give me a name. I don't see any at this point. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on. We will, the next item on our agenda is information items. And Deanna, this looks like one for you, minimum basic education requirement.
This is our annual compliance report that I have to submit to show that we are meeting our instructional hours offering. It's called the minutes report, but it's really an hours calculation. We made some adjustments to the busing schedule, we had to because of changing, moving people around to different schools. But in that, we're able to get care of these time to be the same as the other two elementaries. And then the high school made a little slight adjustment in their schedule. So everybody, all of our elementaries are well above the thousand hours. And our secondaries are well above the thousand eighty. So it was, it's been really good, it's been able to help us, especially as we try to align things in the buildings to make sure they'll have the same amount of instructional time. So we will definitely meet that requirement this year. Hopefully we'll be able to be doing that in normal school for the whole year. So this is the, for information so that the board is aware that we are meeting that requirement.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Deanna? All right, moving along to discussion items. We don't have anything listed that we carried over from last meeting, so we will move to reports. And the first report tonight is Deanna for curriculum and instruction.
Back to Deanna, just two things. We have almost all of our parent educators with their 28 required hours. We've had some struggles, especially if someone missed training in any time in the last two years. Trying to make it up right now with some people either having to be in quarantine or being ill has been a little bit of a challenge. We have a handful of people who will be training tomorrow and next Thursday. But ninety-five percent of our parents are done with their 28 hours. And some of our brand new parents we just hired are done with their 28 hours. Because we were able to do training in the summer, we did some training right before school started and some makeup training. So we're doing very well in that respect. Now they'll be able to move on and do some more different types of training that are, the district's able to do some, some direction with that. You know, extra maybe training for like special ed paras in areas that was support, support special education students, ELL students. It could be like training around curriculum for the classes that they're doing and many other things. My second thing is we do have some students online that the district's been able to work with our providers. We have, we were going to have more spots and edge annuity, our K five program, but they, there's such a demand for online right now. They ended up limiting our spots to ten. Housel has eight, nine, 10, 10 or less students online in the high school, the last time it was nineteen. So it's about forty students in the district that are attending school online. Those are still our students, they can still access services, they still have their devices checked out to them. If they are able to participate in clubs and sports and activities as well. That's all for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Deanna? All right, we'll move on to the business and operations report. We need, we're going to do three of those now.
Yeah, I can just talk about, it's beginning of school. We're working on hammering down enrollment and coming up with definite numbers. Of course, we budgeted for seventy fewer kids in, in the budget. And so right now we're working on, I believe Monday was, or no Tuesday, sorry, was the count day. And so we're working on getting numbers to submit to the state. And of course, that's one of the drivers of the money that we'll receive from the state. So it's pretty important. So Craig is out of the office, if there are any questions or comments, please let me know and, and we can go about answering those.
Okay, great, thank you. On to principals and I'm, I've been told that the principals have some new teachers that they'd like to introduce. And I'm excited to hear that, but I thought maybe you'd like to know who we are too. So I'm going to start down with Jeannie, you want to say your name and, I'm Jeannie Aubrey, welcome, we're happy to have you here.
That's Lingle.
And I'm Peggy Douglas and we're currently looking for our fifth board mentor, so I'm, nothing's lost. We have to hide, I mean, we have to bring a new one on. Okay, so I'm going to start with the high school this time. Mr. Bailey, would you like to start with your staff? Hey. He has to usually go last.
A little surprised too, that's great. We are excited to, to announce the following members of our new team. Sometimes it feels like we are adding an entire department, so I apologize if it seems that way. But I wanted to start off with our special education department at the high school. We have three new teachers, one of which was a educator for us in the past and has transitioned from being a parent educator to regular classroom teacher, Beth Mulberry. Our second teacher is also in the sped department, she is a resource room teacher for ELA, Jennifer Harris. And she has done a lot of work in getting her teaching credentials through our district. So she's been at almost every building in our district and we were happy to, to put her on staff as well. And our last teacher in the sped department is Samantha Esso. She came to us from Yakima Tribal, she is our life skills teacher and we're super excited to have her. We've already had two AEP meetings with this team and I'm excited with the direction that it's going.
Frank, can I, I, if they're in the audience, could they stand so, math, we don't know who anybody gets right now.
And they are not in the audience, so I apologize. I just did a quick look and I don't think any of our new hires at the high school are here in person today. So I apologize for that, but they may be here online though, I didn't get a chance to look. These moves did allow us to make one move, which I'm also very excited about. I just wanted to reintroduce Lisa Gorman. She has been on medical leave and she is back with us at the high school. And she's taking the transition specialist position, which is a new creation for us at the high school. We're really excited about it, offering transition services to all of our students on AEPs to help transition them from school into the workplace. And it's a tall order and a big task that I know she's up to. Still within the sped department, we have three educators that we have hired and that have been a great help so far. In all three of them, actually, two of the three are in the life skills room. First, we have Kristi Hauser, who was a long-term sub for us last year and got the position this year. We also have Jenny McClure, Jenny used to work at a number of buildings in the district and she is now back at the high school. And we added one to our resource room math room, she was a long-term sub last year, so she worked closely with Ms. Mowbray last year. And she got the position this year, Ms. Monica Jariel. We have, I'll count them as two new math teachers, really, we have one math teacher. Our first in our math department is Cassidy Moore, she was a long-term sub for us when we had a teacher out on medical leave. And we have, she'll be teaching our algebra one and geometry classes this year, some of. And our other new hire is Mr. Matthew Greagle, he came to us from Kamaiakin as a parent educator there. And he's been great with our kids so far and we're excited to see where he heads.
Will he be teaching in math?
He is also teaching math, he's teaching our lower level math classes as well. So our two new teachers are algebra one and geometry. We have two new additions to our ELL bilingual migrant program. The first is Mr. Quinn Martin, he is local to Prosser, but has been traveling to Tri-Cities for work until this year. So we're excited to get him and he also teaches language arts, so he has one class of language arts as well as his bilingual class and migrant class. And then we added Mr. Albert Flores, so we, much to the delight of Ms. Saban, we stole him from Heights and brought him up to the high school. So it's, these, these two are going to be paramount with their, with their kids transitioning them out of their, out of our bilingual program and, and getting our kids to graduation. So we're excited for those two as well. We also hired new grad specialists. This was actually a really good process for us in the interview process and we were able to outline a lot of new things. We're excited for this individual, Erica Alvarez. She's been a community and schools employee in our building for the last three years and has been very integral in the development of our students. So we're excited to, to have her full-time and continue those services that, and in addition to community and schools that they provided with us before. And then last but not least, you know, and we'll get to this later in the agenda, but we added our choir and guitar teacher, music teacher, Mr. Bailey Maya. As a last, last minute hire, we're super excited for him, he has a lot of energy and enthusiasm for both guitar and choir. And we can see him moving this program to great heights in the future. I hope I didn't miss anybody.
Yeah, I've already heard about your guitar teacher.
Have you?
Oh, I'm really excited about guitar, that was a great.
That's good, that's good, thank you.
Thank you. Michael, how's a middle school?
We thought we were going to be immune from the, the higher bug and early August, we had some last minute moves. Staff that were able to move across the country closer to their families. And so it was a, you know, bittersweet, but we had three new teachers that we brought on this year. One, Brian has already talked about Bailey, he's teaching choir at the middle school right now, we're looking to expand that out and what we can do there. Bertha Montano was a professor grad and she has come back and is going to be teaching English Language Arts for our sixth grade. And then we have another professor grad, Tanner Bolt, wanted to be a mathematician and teach math to students. So we said, we've got a position, so he's going to be teaching math intervention to our, to our students. We had a couple moves within the, in the district, so Kathy Asparza came back to Housel and is teaching health and PE. And then Christine Bryan is teaching art, so we've, we've nabbed those from different schools, we won't talk about that. Brian brought up some names, but we're not going to talk about that right now. We have a long-term sub in Cooper Blair, Cooper's in a program, so it's working really well to have that experience. And like I said, kind of build some of the, the, you know, the professor graduates to be able to hopefully come back and, and help us out there. We also have a couple of student teachers, so we have Bertha who is teaching. But we have Brenda Montano who's going to be doing student teaching with Jessica Huntington in math. So we're excited about that as well. Then we have Kat Shin, who is a, is a local name, she's, I'm working on hers as well, so she'll be student teaching in the building. And then we have, for our classified staff, Noah Flores, picked up Noah, he's been working with us, so excited about that. And then Terry Cardenas is our most recent hire in the, in the custodial program that we have, so.
Great, thank you very much, Michael. Professor Height.
Okay, so we have quite the, I've got, I just want to have some bounty points because my people actually showed up.
You should.
And if you notice that, I'm just going to say they keep trying to say that how they stole my people, but my people. Actually, I'm not going to say he's completely my bet. Eduardo Zapata is our new elementary migrant, student migrant advocate and he is for all three elementary schools. He's been a great pickup and he's a professor school district or professor high school graduate. Justin Fields is our school psychologist, psych. We have three fifth grade, new fifth grade teachers that I'm super excited about, one that happens to be here, Jennifer Hertzfield. She's our fifth grade dual language teacher, Kaylee Hallerman and Kimberly Mandarback. And actually, a fun fact about Kimberly is that she interviewed last year's on her honeymoon in Mexico. So I'm super excited about those three because we have that core team that has retired and I feel like these three can really be our new face of fifth grade. And we have two third grade, new third grade teachers, Ronaldo Martinez, he's our third grade dual language teacher since Albert left us for the high school. And then Michaela Mickelson, and she actually student taught last year in third grade, so we're excited about those guys. And then we also hired some of our parents, is Jasmine Cortez, is one of our new parents. Nikki Duncan, she worked for some of the preschool at Whichfin. And Patricia Rutherford, Rutherford, she came up from KRV with us. And then Alex Rojas came back to us and then we stole Joaquin Rumble from, I like to say stole, like, we welcomed him, not stole. We welcomed him from Whichtran and so those are our new, new hires.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Whichtran. Are you tonight, Kevin?
So my list is pretty short, most of the people returned. Tatiana Quijano is a teacher that's done some long-term subbing for us and we hired her as our fourth grade bilingual. And then we have a husband and wife, Jessica Cardenas, who's our new first grade teacher. And then Nelson Cardenas, who's our new counselor. So those are the three new additions that we have at Whichtran.
Thank you. And Riverview.
Okay, we have a brand new teacher in first grade, Chelsea Dowdy. And she came to us from Richland, she's a new teacher, I think she did some private schooling, homeschooling things before. Debbie Stevens came to us from Granview, she's our new life skills teacher, she was kind of a late hire, but we're excited to have her in our sped department and she will be going after her sped endorsement this year too. Then we have Jessie Rumble, who is our social worker, social worker, school counselor. She's worked in the past in social work and this is her first year in the education system. And then I have two life skills parents, Patty Schock and Jolene Brett Howard. And then I also have a few people that are from in district, but they have come to KRV that we're excited about. So Sean Van Winkle's our PE teacher, Danny Godinez is our new custodian and Carrie Giles is one of our new one-on-one parents.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we're excited for them.
Thank you, well, first of all, I want to welcome all of our new teachers, but I also want to say a special thank you to our principals for getting us quality, great teachers in our classrooms and for all the hard work you guys, guys have done during the summer to get us ready to start school. And just a little extra for the principals, beginning next meeting, we'll start getting reports again from you. So give it, we're going to give you two weeks off. All right, now we're going to move on to, are they at the other board members, everything you want to add? Okay, we're going to move on to all of the director reports. And I want to say we're going to check and connect with, with our directors. Almost all of you provided us with information before the board meeting, that's a bit, was available to the public also. And I want to thank you for that. I know that there's a lot of hard work for department directors and different program directors to get the school year up and running. And then on the reports, I want to try to just, if you have anything else you would like to add, this will be the time for you to do it. So I'm going to call each of the, the folks up to the microphone, but I, I really, unless you want to, you really don't need to read your whole report. Just kind of give us the highlights of how things are going for you. So let's start with our career and technical education. Hope he's not here. Oh, I missed that one, but well, career and technical education, is Rick available? Is he online, Tammy? Okay.
I don't think he felt well.
Okay, well, we got his report, so, sorry, Kevin, if you'd like to come up for the athletics and activity report, I appreciate that.
Thank you, well, mine was one that you didn't get because we've been chasing our tail, getting everything rocking and rolling here to start the year. I'll be quick though. The great news is we're back in action, both at the high school and at the middle school. And we've got kids running around in all different directions, everything from meetings and calendaring, organizing concessions and fundraising, the student planning that we haven't talked about in, in a while. ASPs are being sold at both places, forty-five and thirty. We're just getting relatively excited, it's just fun to go outside and see all the kids running around or in the gyms, so we're really excited about that. ASPs are back in rotation of training with Wasbo, which has been a really good thing. In fact, Laura is, Mrs. Bachopner is going to be a part of the presentation with Wasbo this week. We've asked our ASB officers to be a part of that so they can kind of get a little bit of taste of, of that work that they need to do. At the middle school, like I said, activities are in full speed, we've had our recent, end of last week, Mid Valley League Schools meeting. The fall sports is cross-country football, boys soccer, volleyball. The schedule should be out by the end of this week, getting ready to crank it up. We at HMS had a number of coaches to hire, we're still doing that a little bit for at least one sport. But we're in the process and anybody who's interested out there, give me a call. At PHS, as well as at the middle school, we're bound to follow the guidelines from the state. It's no news to you guys, but just as a, a quick review, WIA works with the Department of Health, they give us our expectations. Outdoor sports, for the most part, is recommend masking, but it's not required. And so that's basically how we've been operating in the outdoor sports as we move to indoor sports with volleyball. It's a moderate risk sport, so inside with the people who are competing and playing, you won't see masks, but on everybody else you would. Everybody who's in there is a spectator, coach, scorekeeper, they would, they would have masks. We have a little more work to do as we move into the winter sports because we've got high-risk sports in basketball and in wrestling. And cheer gets in there a little bit because they, the nature of their sport. But we'll have work to do there where we'll be having to know their vaccination status, that will have an indifference on whether they are required to mask or not. But they also have the option of testing, which is a whole nother conversation that we can have probably at a different time that's coming, that we're going to have to test those who are not being vaccinated. I'll have to test twice a week, negative, then they can participate. But there's a lot of work to do and I guess I would, I would be remiss if I didn't just make a comment there about the work that our current nursing staff has been doing with all of that stuff. They have been incredible and really kind of run ragged at this point, but they're doing a great job. Relative to contests, if anybody was in town last Friday, we finally had a buzz that we haven't had in town for a while just in the atmosphere with a couple thousand people at Art Fiker Stadium, so that was awesome. The outcome wasn't what we wanted, but to have that, great people attending and in cooperation and just a fun experience.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
Did we, do we require the, the people that are in the audience to be masked?
It's outside of that.
Then, did we still have to follow some type of distance? So how are you maintaining that?
Carefully and almost impossible to keep three to six feet between anybody. Family groups certainly are encouraged to sit together with some distance between. And everybody, we had an AD meeting today, everybody was in exactly the same boat, attacking that best that they could. But there's no requirement for masking in those events.
And the inside events?
Inside events, there will be, everybody like volleyball will be everybody except for those who are playing. Wanted to give Dave and his staff kudos in prepping outdoor spaces and indoor spaces for all the striping and work and the people that are working to do all of that for us. The staff at the middle school is setting up multiple times because we've got limited space, bring the high school over to practice. So they're having to change from getting ready for the day to get ready for lunch to then take down, get ready for practices. And at the end of the day, get back ready for breakfast and all that kind of stuff. So those staff are really working hard. I would say that at new PHS, I, Brian and I laughed at this a little bit, but there's a clip online that you can see of people putting an airplane together while it's flying. It's an old commercial, it kind of what it feels like at PHS right now, because it's not really all together, but we're functioning and doing the best that we can. But I think it's just important that there's still fixes and, and products that are coming in that haven't got here yet for whatever reason, be it shipping or production. So we are still working on getting all that, so we don't have all that, that could be gym equipment, including, you know, volleyball equipment or repair on volleyball pockets, score tables, chairs, there's just a lot of equipment we don't have yet, so we're working to kind of put that together while we're moving. We also have some issues with some outside storage that we've got some plans on, Matt and I've had a short conversation on potential fix. As we move forward this year, we're, we plan on continuing our streaming, our events for those who can't attend all along. We love the service, we love the feedback that we got from our community, we want to continue that. That has always been our plan though, for revenue stream with that. And so we've got to make some decisions down the line on, on how we would do that. And Matt and I again have had a short conversation, we'll look for some more feedback on that as we go. We did in our AD meeting today, more than half are charging for their live streaming services about what we were thinking about per event. And some are not, and some of those have an in-house option that they're doing, so they're, that's working pretty well. Anyway, we just want to make sure that people want to come to our place, want to come to our event, we'd like them to pay the six dollars to come to the event because it's a revenue option along with burgers and, you know, Gatorade or whatever else they can get while they're at our places. So there's our pitch for the day. We've had cross-country invite, it was a time trial on Friday, like I said, football versus Sunnyside, then volleyball had a really good hard fought match last night at Sunnyside, girls soccer, we hope to be home tomorrow, it was scheduled away, but it was supposed to be at Highland. But they've already called it because of smoke, so they said, we'll come on down here, so as long as our numbers are good. So just sharing all of that with you, we got swim coming up next Thursday, if you're interested, so we are flying. So we are flying around.
I wanted to say K and B U had a really nice special last night on the high school football program. And Corey Ingleton was, had talked a lot about the old benches were moved over to the new high school because of the tradition and that. And I just thought it was, it was really a nice kudo to process and to, you know, the things that we do. It's not, but everything doesn't have to be new. It's that tradition that's shared. You know, this is where I want to be myself, so.
Well, I think we can, we can feel really great about that because S W X gets to make that choice where they want to go. There's a bunch of games that was last Friday night, and they called us about two months ago, looking at the schedule and asking if it would be something that we'd be up for. And we said absolutely. And we wanted them to have the opportunity to get a picture of a clip of new school, old school, just the people of Prosser and the activities that we have going. So we was a sort of good push out there. I think they did a good job.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. So hello, Rick, with the career and technical education report. Hi, can you say something, Rick, so we can make sure we can all hear you? We're having a little bit of a technical problem here, it looks like. Well, Tammy, while you work at getting the audio corrected with Rick, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next one. Okay, so we will move quickly to child nutrition report. I don't see Darlene here. Let me see if she's online. He's not.
Hey Peggy.
Oh, okay, there's Darlene.
I actually didn't do up a report this time.
I can't hear you, Darlene, just a second here. Oh, okay, go ahead, Darlene.
I I actually didn't prepare a report for this meeting. We've been crazy busy getting settled into our new kitchen.
Yes.
Do you have any questions for me, Peggy?
I, I don't. Any of the other board members, I do appreciate your hard work, Darlene. I know it's been a challenge for the last, oh my gosh, twenty months. But then getting everything into the new high school cafeteria and kitchen area has just been amazing thing to watch. I, I appreciate your report, so thank you to your staff, please.
I definitely will, and I will have a report for you on the next meeting, okay?
Okay, that sounds great.
Thank you, Peggy.
Okay, for those that you can hear, that was Darlene, who is our child nutrition services director. Okay, I don't see Rick on here. Okay, we're still trying to get Rick. So Deanna, are we close? Rick, can you unmute yourself? Oh, there he is. All right, we're going to move on.
If you're okay, I'll just go ahead and give a little update on his piece here.
Perfect, thank you.
So I apologize for that. We'll continue to work on these tech issues like we always do. In his report, though, it was very interesting to talk about the different graduation pathways. That's what this is referring to, his document. Generally, we have the college bound pathway and the C T E or the, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not even a C T E pathway, it's the career pathway. In order to get the career pathway for graduation, you have to receive two credit hours in one specific program within the C T E department. And so this is what his report is based on. And Rick can say this much more eloquently than I can, so I apologize, Rick. He might have to do this again next time, but two credits in a singular C T E area. And to be honest with you, I just rely on Rick to be able to tell you all those areas. But, for example, we have the medical, the medical field, you have the mechanical electrician type stuff, and I'm butchering this for him, so I apologize. But what was really interesting to me is the four year graduation rate for those students who are receiving that pathway. At Prosser High School, we have a ninety four point three percent graduation rate of students that are taking two credit hours in our C T E compared to the state average, which is eighty three percent. So we are well ahead of the state average in our, in these students that are taking multiple C T E courses. And that is one of the reasons why we're always trying to look for ways to expand our C T E program. Rick and I have been working very closely together to try and and continue to search out new opportunities and ways that we can expand our our offerings and tie into the middle school programs as well. And it's a big push. I know that we just added some more programs at the middle school through C T E that will tie directly into our health sciences, tie directly into robotics and future offerings at the high school. And that's, that's one of the reasons why.
Okay, moving on to maintenance director report, Dave.
Hello, everyone. What a summer. Okay, so I just kind of jotted down a couple of things. Of course, we have or continue to have COVID issues. We're bringing, in fact, Linda and Allison were up at the shop quite a bit today, and we kind of did an inventory. And we have some other stuff that's coming in, and that's, it's doing really well. I think that we're going to, you know, shouldn't have any issues at all. Construction, you know, there's always little weird things that come up, like we're having to water River View manually, so I'm not really sure how we're going to resolve that, the play fields. Because we have kids on them all the time, and by the time the kids leave, my guys have went home. So we'll come up with something on that. We're having the same issue at the practice school, but the high school football. We have, I think, I probably mentioned this before, but Ray Ledesma is our new stadium person. I just kind of thought of that earlier. So if you have any issues, I think his phone number is in the book, you just call him. Ray Ledesma. Ray was at River View and was foolish enough to come, come to the stadium, so. So we still have other weird things, like we have the high school, Ron Chavez is actually changing water at the heights. And then, you know, he's a full time custodian at the high school. So, but we'll get through it, and, you know, we had a quite an eventful summer. Like to thank Jody and Jesse for all the work that they did. It was a kind of a trying experience. And lastly, athletic fields. We, tomorrow, we can christen the new soccer field. That'll be finally finished being yesterday, and then they canceled the game, so that was kind of a bummer. Football, we probably all heard about how bad the field was, but, you know, we'll get it back. I've seen it like that before. We have plenty, plenty of stuff that we can get on to tell all the, especially when you, when you, when you go with that water like that, it's that hot. Because the grass quits growing, but the weeds don't. So, you know, once you get those weeds in there, it's really hard to get them out. I think that's it.
Personally, I want to thank you and your team. You're busy anyway in the summer, but this summer with moving buildings, you having to manage different moving crews. It's amazing.
No, thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Great, thank you. I'll pass that along. Thank you.
Migrant and bilingual education.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Okay, so we can't unmute if you're attending remotely. Yeah, so our next
Can you hear me?
Report is, well, we have.
You can't hear me?
Our next is safety and security report.
Wow.
Good evening. Just a couple of topics that are really, really important as far as the safety and security team goes. The team completed and attended the S R O S S O mandated training that was required under House Bill twelve fourteen. Completing the thirteen topics of instruction, we still have on the job training requirements that we have to complete. But those are yet to be set out by the state task force. And then we also have six show up training requirements that the state house force is going to do for us as well. Those all have to be completed prior to February of two thousand twenty two.
How long have you been working on the required, the House Bill forcing all of those requirements for the additional training?
Well, as far as the requirement, the requirement just came into effect this year, but it was passed by the legislature. Correct, yes. Other issues that are, that the I D badges for the district. The four new printers have come in, along with webcams for each one. So those four have been issued to the high school, Housel, King River View and Heights. The two district printers that we had that belonged to Dorian's. One will go to the administration office and the other one will go to Witstrand. Dorian will be installing all of their software into the drivers into those printers and on the school's individual picture day. So every staff member should have a picture. Now that we all have our own printers, if we have new hires or subs or whatever the case throughout the year, we should be able to badge them up. There should be no reason why we don't have people not wearing badges now. And radios, the final radios that were programmed were issued today. So the district administration staff now has all of their radios. Everybody that needs a radio has one. Everybody that wants one has one. Everyone that doesn't want one, got one. So I know that superintendent requested reports on first of the week events, how things went for each school. I submitted one for my school, one for King River View and one for Housel. I didn't receive reports from River, Witstrand or Heights, so. Questions?
When you take the radios, I'm assuming, are you responsible then to train each of the buildings? Or how is that training being passed down to staff?
Yeah, so we, we have basic programming issues that we still need to deal with. We have fine tuning issues that we need to deal with. Each individual security officer at the school has been issued or has been given the radios to issue out to his or her school. So I've taken responsibility for issuing them out to the district administration office as well. And to also to big shell maintenance and then all the other directors within the district. Give us time, there's, there's bugs in that tech, too, so.
Just as a side note, I just wanted to praise you for, I know that you put in a lot of work around writing that grant. And those radios are super nice. In fact, I wish, I wish I would have brought mine to show the board. But they're, they're extremely nice, and I know they're going to be of huge benefit in the future and increase our safety and security and communication throughout the district. So I just wanted to praise you and say excellent job on that. We really appreciate your hard work behind that.
My pleasure.
Great, thank you very much.
I should ask, any board comments or questions? Okay. We will move on to for the Zoom audience, just so you know, those, those directors that are, would normally be addressing this via Zoom. We have, we have a technical problem, and so their reports are online or most of the reports are online. And I apologize that you're not able to actually hear their, their reports that are coming in via Zoom. So our next one here is, and it's the transportation report.
So we made it. We made it. I ended up closing a route down so that I'm not in a bus every day driving. And it was a local in town route, so we took three buses and just split the stops between three buses to make those routes more efficient because they have ridership drops on those. With closing that route down, that allows us to do two trips a day. So I'm working with Kevin to make sure we're not overbooking sports trips and so that we can be super efficient and get the kids out there every day. Let's see. We did a lot of summer projects that I'm excited about. We got all the asphalt redone at the bus garage and in the employee parking, and they're so ecstatic that there are no holes to trip on. And buses are not jolting in and out or getting stuck in the depths anymore. We also got bird netting up, so now we don't have pigeon nests that we have to be aware of dropping on it as we pre-trip our buses. I got new bus washing equipment, so the buses will be cleaner as they're out around town. We also bought a lift so we can get the roofs now, too. So, and the new power washer that has a long enough hose to get up there so they can spray it all off. We got a couple new vacuums for inside the bus. We got some blowers so we can keep the the yard clean, which will be great. Everybody's excited about all of that. We lost one driver over the summer and we gained one driver, so we are breaking even, and I'm excited about that. My O S K I meeting, we are the only one in our area that is staff perfectly. Everybody else is needing multiple drivers, so. We have one morning sub driver, she works four days a week, and no afternoon sub drivers right now. We are, I've been working with unemployment, I've been putting ads out, we're trying to get people in. We just can't convince them how fun it is. So, and then, yeah. And then we're also looking for a new assistant mechanic. So we should be able to get all that started on Friday.
Great. Thank you, you've done this one job.
Thank you.
How many routes, total routes, do we have, like in the morning?
Twenty four, total routes.
And they're picking up a lot of children.
Yeah, most buses now, now that we did the split, we're looking at a minimum of about forty five students on each bus during each run. There are many more you will see in town as the schools have been combined, we're shuttling them back into their walk zones. So you'll see quite a bit of traffic in town when school's out. Because we have, I think there's four or five buses that are going to the Boys and Girls Club or going to walk zones and dropping those kids off that walk there. So we have a lot of shuttle points for them so they can get to school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I think we're on to to maintenance report. Thank you, everybody, that we're able to make it tonight.
Okay, so Amy had just mentioned a little bit about the staffing in transportation. That's not just with transportation. We're realizing basically how fragile our system is as it interfaces with COVID. As teachers may become close contacts or have close contacts, and may have to go out. As bus drivers, as we get closer to the eighteenth, there are a number of different variables that could affect our school system. We've been super fortunate in having our staffing full and being able to continue in the way that we have. But that'll be a conversation that we have to, you know, have to encounter in the future. This year, we hired a basically a permanent sub at each building to fill in, and their job is to be a roving, kind of a roving sub. And other, in other positions, and that'll help instructionally to fill those spots if people go out. And other positions like custodial, like in transportation, we may not have secretarial, we may not have those substitutes who are able to fill in. And so we're working around contingency planning at the district level. So that's, that's something that, you know, we're already realizing that we're having teachers who are saying, you know, I was, I was close to somebody over the weekend who was, you know, came down with COVID, and I'm going to need to be out until I get tested. And so, yeah, we're going to be dealing with that and planning around that for the And so, yeah, we're gonna be dealing with that and planning around that for the future to make sure that we don't have to shut down. And we've had schools in our region who've already had to do that. We're continuing with bargaining. We settled, we have a tentative agreement with the PSC. We settled with the PEA. We still have a lot of different units open that Craig and I will be working on coming to an agreement with. Last week, we reached out to Patterson about continuing our talks around the high school contribution and their contribution around to the bond measure, Patterson being a non-high district. We're working in the district around getting our exemption forms filled out and vaccination cards submitted. And then, of course, we're advertising for the vacancy of the board spot. Overall, we've had a great start to the beginning of school. We haven't had too many cases that have disrupted our system, but we were as cautious, and we know that that's a possibility if we don't do things right, so I've been extremely pleased with our staff and the way that they've conducted themselves and they've taken this seriously, so. Are there any questions about any of that information that I shared with you?
Okay, Board Report.
I haven't been called Jessie for a lot of years. Okay, so I wanted to say I really enjoyed attending both the certified and classified luncheons that were put on at the high school before school started. It was really great to see all the staff and just welcome everyone back in that way. WASDA, so Washington State School Directors Association, puts on meetings every Thursday lunch hour, so I've been attending those and getting good information on what we as school board members are required to do these days. And then the regional WASDA meeting is tomorrow night, which usually we're able to travel and meet with other area school boards, but it is virtual, so I'm registered to attend that, so I'll go to that and report back. And then I just wanted to thank staff for the great start to school across the board, from transportation through the classrooms and admin and everybody back to sports. It's amazing and awesome, and I know everyone's put in a lot of work doing that. And just for my part, the open houses went really smoothly, too, taking High Schooler and Heights two point oh. It was, everything went really well, so thank you to everyone's hard work.
Oh, I just wanted to say a couple things. I attended the luncheons also that Jesslyn did, and enjoyed interacting with people I knew and meeting new people I met our transportation lady's son. What a nice guy. I enjoyed reading all the reports. They're very thorough, and it taught me that we have a lot of really good people in our school district. And the other thing, I was at the stadium for the football game, and just to comment, there was an announcement over the loudspeaker stating that masks, you should, you should possibly wear your mask because of COVID, but it was not required outdoors. Some people had them on, some people didn't, so, just for information.
Thank you. And I actually have much more to report other than, I'm, I'm so thankful for all of our administrators and directors of the district. We really make a learning experience here in Prosser, something very positive for our children, and I can't say as much. I appreciate all the thank you. On to student reports. Zeke, would you like to go first?
I just wanted to take time and thank the board members, the taxpayers, all the people that made the new school possible. I think it was money well spent. I'd like to thank Mr. Bailey for leading the administration over there. I think they're doing a good job, and they'll continue to do a good job.
What Zeke said, I'd just like to thank everyone for their hard work. It's good to be back.
So, well, I would like to first mention that I really enjoyed coming back to school. I really think it's been really enjoyable to be in the new school and being able to just go, go to my classes in the new building. I guess something I did want to mention is if, was there, is there any plans to like, like paint some lines, like in the stadium parking? Because I've heard of, like, that's like really just really messy during school. And so I think that could be, I'm not sure how, what that takes or not, not something, but I just definitely have heard that around students. I don't personally park, I park up there, but I've heard definitely a lot of complaints about that, so.
Yeah, it was, that area was actually a staging area. I'm doing the construction, and so there's a lot of heavy machinery and, you know, concrete pipes, things like that, and so it was fenced off, and so, yeah, striping it will be something that we tackle in the near future. We really, we really are at max capacity, I think, with a lot of, with so many projects going on at once. And we're trying to get things up and going. On top of that, we have COVID. So, yeah, we will, that is on a list of things to do, and we'll be addressing that as soon as possible.
But thank you for bringing it forward. All right. Moving on to consent items, and just a reminder that we added to our consent agenda. Item number seven, D, the Eastern Washington University in, in, Eastern Washington University College in the High School classroom for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and this is our memorandum of so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Jesslyn. Any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 So, all yes. And then we'll move on to action items. The first action item is vouchers, and I would entertain a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
On that, that we approve them as presented.
I will second it.
Motion by Jeannie, seconded by Andy. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the vouchers as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so all yes. The next action item is the temporary out-of-endorsement waiver, and this is for that.
I, I think Jessie called her Stevens. So, yeah, these are some of our late hires. She, she was a late hire, and then some you'll see on the emergency certs are late hires or subs that are gonna be in the building more than twenty days in a, in an assignment.
What was the last name, Stevens?
It's Stevens now.
Okay, well, move to approve the temporary out-of-endorsement waiver for Stevens, twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Jeannie. Any questions on the board? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so all yes. Emergency certificates.
Also late hires. All these four are in teaching programs or finishing up teaching programs. Cooper is subbing long-term for a teacher who has a new baby, so this is more of our grow our own type program, so they, they have a lot of support, and they, they will have mentors as, as well as being the best mentor program. And the buildings provide them a lot of support as well, so I think they're all gonna be really good hires.
Great.
Move to approve the emergency certification approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Jeannie. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so all yes. This is a, next one is donation from Ron Bunnell. Yeah, okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the donation. I believe it was face masks for both adults and children, and very much appreciated. Actually, it was thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty adult-sized masks and seven hundred and fifty child masks. So that's, that's really something that's very positive, and, you know, it needed it in the district. And the estimated value was twenty-one thousand and ninety dollars, so.
And our nurses would have put in a very large PO for more masks if we hadn't gotten this donation, so.
Wonderful, great. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve acceptance of the donation.
Move to approve the acceptance of the donation from Ron Bunnell.
I will second it.
Motion by Jess, seconded by Andy. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So all yes, thank you. Final action item is the adoption of policy number twenty-one ninety-five. This is academic acceleration, and this is first reading. We actually heard about it at the last meeting, but this is the first official meeting. So no action.
Move to approve first reading, adoption of policy twenty-one ninety-five.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, so Andy and then Jess, and this will come back for second final reading at our next meeting. Okay. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so all yes. Okay. Sure.
The Boys and Girls Club just did their Dunk Tank fundraiser, and Mr. Brian Bailey and Mrs. Felix Cortez will be dunked on Friday night at the football game. But Brian has decided he's just gonna hang out in the, in the Dunk Tank for the first half of the game, right? And take more donations for people to dunk him repeatedly, so bring your money and wear your mask, because I'm sure you'll be in close proximity to other people wanting to dunk him as well.
Great. Good job, Brian. Okay, future meetings, our next regular school board meeting will be here at Housel Middle School at seven o'clock on September twenty-second. And then our, the, our first meeting in October is October thirteenth at Housel at seven. And we hope to be able to continue to hold in-person meetings, but just as a, and if at some point it's, they decide that we need to close down in-person meetings, it'll all be remote, so it'll carry on like we did before, but let's hope that we can continue to do the in-person meetings. And so I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Jeannie. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so all yes. Thank you all for coming tonight. Great reports.